Good evening, everybody. At this time, I would like to resume the August 19, 2019 Lacy Township Board of Education meeting. At this time, we will resume the meeting and we will have the reports of the superintendent.
Okay, welcome. It's August, and wow, hard to believe, went fast. Just had a crazy snowstorm.
Windstorm.
Did I just say that? I'm so sorry, I did not mean to say that. Wow. Rainstorm, rainstorm, yeah, it did, it melted fast. It is hard to believe that it is August 19th, so I want to welcome all of you, but I also wanted to extend happy summer vacation still because summer is not over. But, school will open in exactly 16 days on September 4th, and I wanted to remind our families that for the first time in a long time, the first three days of school will be half-days. If you recall, last September, first three days of school were incredibly, incredibly warm, and it's very, very difficult for the elementary schools, so the first three days will be half-days. So, we hope our families have been enjoying summer vacation. The question that always comes up is, you know, what did we do over, over summer vacation? And so, I just want to give you some statistics that I do every August, and let you know that our custodial grounds and maintenance staff have been working very hard. They have cleaned and organized over 650,000 square feet of school buildings, and cared for 150 acres of school grounds, playgrounds, and athletic fields. That is no small feat. Our guidance counselors, child study team members, secretarial staff have prepared over 4,000 student schedules and class lists, and they're still working hard at that. The administrative team prepared master schedules, conducted numerous interviews right up until a few days ago to hire outstanding staff, and participated in professional development to prepare for school opening. Around 5 o'clock today, we welcomed all of our new staff during our new staff reception. So, our staff got to introduce themselves, our board members got to introduce themselves, and our administrators who were with us also got to introduce themselves. The transportation department has been hard at work preparing over 160 bus routes, and are working hard on getting our buses ready for the roads to transport our students. And finally, when students walk into their classrooms on September 4th, they're going to be greeted with just some wonderful decorations. Our teachers have been in, preparing our students for first day of school. So, let's talk a little bit about what's new for the upcoming school year. I absolutely cannot highlight everything. I hope to do that in September, when I share our first Lacy Minute of the school year, but also highlight some of the things that are new. But let me do that tonight, just to give you a snippet. The Inclusive Preschool Program will begin its second year. We are very excited to say that, you know, we've expanded that, and I'm going to encourage our parents to continue to register. The information for the Inclusive Preschool Program is on our website. The new childcare program, Champions, is well underway, and we welcome our area manager, Storm Matthias, and his team. Registration is also open for our before and after childcare program. At Mill Pond, I'm excited to announce that all students in grade five, grades five and six will participate in a brand-new STEM program as a rotator, and I know that Mrs. Nemick and her team are excited about that. At the high school, the Lacy Township High School Ocean County College Academy Cohort Two, which is the class of 2020, will begin their senior year. If you recall, we just graduated 22 students in Cohort One. They earned their associate's degree before earning their high school diploma. And Cohort Three, which are our incoming juniors, will also begin their college academy journey, and I'm happy to announce that there are 35 juniors positioning themselves to earn both an associate's degree and a diploma as the class of 2021. On Friday, September 13th, we will light up the football field at our very first home night game, so we hope you can join us for that event. With regard to our facilities, the replacement of the outdoor track at the high school is still underway. Two major projects at Mill Pond are also underway, including the replacement of the boilers and the gymnasium floor. And finally, the installation of our security vestibules at each of our six schools is nearing completion, so if you had an opportunity to visit any of the schools, you should have seen that, that construction. Our school security management team has developed new visitor management protocols that will supplement the vestibule project, and I'm going to invite our families to an information session about the security vestibules and the visitor management protocols on Wednesday, August 28th, at 6 o'clock PM at the high school auditorium. We will send out automated calls and emails to inform our families of that event. Final comments, enjoy the last two weeks of summer. We hope that we will not get any snow. We thank our custodial staff for all of their hard work. They really have been doing an amazing job. In fact, the cover of tonight's Board Agenda is just a small example of some of the amazing things that they're doing. We thank our secretarial staff because they're also hard at work, I mentioned earlier, preparing schedules and a variety of other things. Our admin team also has been in every day, getting our buildings ready and preparing for the new school year. So, we will see you in 16 days. Enjoy the rest of summer, and thank you, President Giordano, for the opportunity to present.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. All right, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment.
Hello, Sangia Marcatello, 232 Sunset Drive, Forkett River. So, I just wanted to come out with a couple of comments and observations. I've noticed over the past several months, there's been many residents and many parents that have brought up lots of good concepts and thoughts and suggestions and ideas, and I just wanted to pick you back on a few of them. I think it's really important for, and by all means, just about everything I have to say tonight is subjective. I don't have any proof or facts or anything about anything else, so please feel free to offer any kind of comments or clarifications as needed. I really do think it's important for the people at the table to understand that there is an absolute responsibility to ensure that there's transparency and accountability to the people of Lacy Township. And that doesn't mean just taxpayers or just parents, because not every parent is a taxpayer in town, right? So, we have the low-income housing, I believe, if they're renting, they don't pay taxes to the schools, right? So, we have parents that have their kids in our district, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're paying taxes. We have taxpayers who don't have children in the district, so they have a vested interest in it. So, you're really looking at a wide variety of certain population that are looking to you for answers. And as I flip through social media and I see things like, "The Mill Pond principal is leaving," and "How come nobody knows about this?" And now what's, "Now Mill Pond is going to get hit again," and, you know, again, just rumor, but I, and I don't know that you guys all know this, so it's important that if you don't know it, that we, as the community, communicate to you what is going on out there. So, whether there's a true ignorance that you just don't know of it, which is understandable, but then, once you're informed of the information, then there should be some sort of movement towards that, to remedy a situation or to address fears and concerns that parents or taxpayers have. So, from what I understand, Mill Pond is not losing their principal, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. Because I, I do feel, you know, I have a, there's a special place in my heart for that school, and that, that building really does need special attention. And I don't claim to be a child psychologist, I don't claim to be a counselor, I am not a professional analyst, but when you take three-year-olds and combine them with 10 through, sometimes 13-year-olds in the same building, where many things are happening to these kids physiologically, psychosocially, these kids need, need attention, and they need consistency, and they need to know what their day is going to be like, especially in a building that they're spending 30 hours a week in. Which leads me to the gym floor. So, we, again, that transparency and communication is what we need to know. So, the, the last update is, from what I know, because I haven't been in the building, is that was the June letter that's on the, the website, which really doesn't tell us much. It doesn't give us a percentage, it doesn't give us an anticipated finish date, and our kids were out of gym for eight months last year of physical education? And when you take into consideration, you know, the, the weather not cooperating, you know, that's really hard to believe that we haven't figured a way to push this along. Again, going back to talking to people in the community, and, you know, there, I haven't been in the building, I haven't looked at the gym, I'm not there every day, but when parents are talking about pink cans weren't touched for two weeks, and nothing was done for a two-week period of time in July because custodians were on vacation, that's disturbing to me, if that's true. And whether it is or whether it isn't, no one really knows unless you were there. So, we don't really know unless you're taking a daily responsibility to show up and to kind of see what's going on. Projects like this should really have some kind of productivity, some kind of advancement in the project on a day-to-day basis, right? This isn't something that just kind of sits stagnant for two weeks, right? They are working on it every day, or no?
Every day.
Okay. So, I would like to know, because I do have a child in that building, is there going to be physical education on the first day of school? Is that gym going to be open? And if it's not, then when is it going to be available for the kids to use?
So, I'm going to answer the first part of that question, I'm going to ask Mr. George to answer the second part. Yes, there is going to be physical education on the first day of school, it's just not going to be in the gym. Mr. George, would you like to answer the second part of that question with regard to progress?
Sure. Not every project is going to have progress every day, it's just the way it works. We do have probably two job meetings a month, progress meetings a month with contractors, Mr. MacArthur, architect of record, to discuss where we are and where we're going in the milestones of every project that we have going on. But, we need to wait until the floor that we ordered, which is the floor that we, we want, is delivered and installed, then the bleachers that we bought to replace the old bleachers are installed, and all of that settles and cures. So, right now, we're looking still at probably early November. That's, that's when we can, we think that the gym will be back in full swing.
Okay, so, we're waiting on delivery of equipment and...
Yep.
Okay, so, so, all I'm asking is that if that, and, and I'm sorry, but checking up on a project like this when school is around the corner should not be every two weeks. Someone from that table should be stepping into that gym and moving things along, right? So, if you're, if you're the, if you are a supervisor or, or a person of leadership, and you have people working for you, you want to make sure that the money is getting spent wisely, and that people are doing their job. That's your responsibility.
Right, that is my responsibility. So, I will tell you this, Mr. MacArthur, our director of facilities, who is excellent, you can't, I couldn't possibly think of a bad thing to say about him, he's on it every day, every project, whether it's a capital project or it's the routine maintenance and cleaning of the schools, he's on it, so...
But how do you know that if you're not checking in on the work?
I know that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak that loud. I know that for a fact. If I could add it on there, I'm sorry, I'm really scary. My volume must be... I'm sorry.
Your mic is on.
So, okay, I don't even...
So, I know that, because I've been trying to meet with Mr. MacArthur as a new board member. We've set up three different meetings, that he's canceled because he's been so busy.
Okay.
I personally have been going to each school, have been to each school twice since I've been on the board in June, checking the vestibule projects.
I know you have.
Checking on things, and going through and seeing what's going on. And I've tried to meet Mr. MacArthur once, I think it's three times, tried to meet, and the man is so busy that he hasn't had time for it. I've been with every administrator, I've been to every school, and I've got a tour of every school since I've been on the board.
Well, thank you, I really appreciate that.
This guy's working his butt off trying to get these schools ready for what it was, and we cannot be on his back every day.
Right.
Because it takes time away from his job, what he's doing, and he's doing a wonderful job.
Okay.
And I've checked with each and every administrator, I've got him doing his job, and they said he's awesome, he's there, whatever he needs, he's supporting us.
That's the answer I was looking for, thank you.
But that's just like I said, what was different about it? The man is...
He said he was in every building.
And who's to say I'm not, or somebody else?
But that's what I just asked.
But who said, but, we have Mr. MacArthur to do the job. If I could do the job, I wouldn't need Mr. MacArthur, would I?
No, but you are responsible to make sure that Mr. MacArthur is...
Yeah, and I'm doing my job. Are you saying I'm not?
So, so, let me...
I told you, this is subjective.
There's an insinuation that...
There's no need to get defensive.
Time out, time out, time out for a minute. Let me speak. There's this insinuation that people sitting at this dais aren't doing their job, it's evident. So, my question to you would be, do you believe everything you see on social media?
No, I don't, that's why I'm here.
Do you believe when you see empty paint cans? Do you believe that nobody checks on the gym floor for two weeks? Do you believe that board members don't go up and walk through schools to see security vestibules?
I do.
To check on progress?
I do.
We do. Do you believe that we don't talk on the phone on a daily, almost daily basis, sometimes, several times a day, to communicate amongst the seven of us what goes on in the schools?
But the communication needs to come out here. So, what's happening between you is no good, because that's going to keep wheels turning on the outside. So, that's what I'm here to, to, to take, to say.
But I, I bring this up all the time. First of all, we're not doing the work, we have contractors doing the work, okay? And the contractors, they want to get these jobs done as fast as possible, because no one, once they get done with this job, they're going to move on to another job and make money, because they're not making any extra money.
Listen, I know how that stuff works. Please, please don't patronize me and don't get defensive.
I'm not patronizing you.
What I'm simply saying is, we would like an update on what's going on and a reminder that someone should be...
All you have to do, like I said in the past, when all this stuff goes on, chatter and whatever, because half of it's probably BS, some of it could be true. But what I tell everyone is, stop the conversation on Lacy Chatter, you've got a question, call the school.
971-2000.
That's what I tell everybody all the time, and this is my third and final year on the board, and I've been saying almost every meeting, because I've read some of that stuff, it's ridiculous.
But what's the difference whether I call or whether I come here for an answer?
You can come here for...
Okay, so that's what I'm doing, and, and so far, I'm being given a hard time.
Ms. Marshall, let me, let me just say this. I'm hearing, I'm hearing...
So, I really am just trying to make a statement that there is concern about the gym floor.
Right, let me, let me add then to what, what everybody here was saying. What I'm hearing you say is, you want some more communication. We can certainly work on some more communication. I can send an updated letter, which I was going to do anyway, but we need a little bit more information from our contractors regarding all of the projects that we have going on. I will do that, and I will continue to add that information to our website.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Wednesday's strategic planning meeting, again, with communication. It's on the website, but all it says is the date and the name of the meeting. No one really knows, is this open to the public? Is this going to be recorded? What is, what does it entail? Is this something that parents and taxpayers should show up to?
That's a great question, and the reason why there isn't more information is because we have a board retreat scheduled on Wednesday, this Wednesday. And Kathy Weinkopf, who is our New Jersey School Boards Association field rep, is doing a presentation on the entire strategic planning process. So, I don't have any information to share yet. After that meeting, very clear information is going to get posted on our website as to what it means, who's going to get invited, who we're looking for, what our committees are going to be. So, it, we're very, very, very early in the process of strategic planning.
So, the, the meeting that's at Wednesday from 3 to 7 is just for the board and administration?
Well, it is a board retreat, however, it is open to the public.
Oh, okay, so that's my, that, that's what I'm looking for.
Right.
Where is that going to be held? And, it is 3 to 7?
3 to 7, right.
And where is that going to be?
So, originally, we had it scheduled for the high school media center, but they're in the process of doing a Chromebook distribution for our students, so we may have to move it to Cafeteria North, but I'm waiting to see if they're going to be able to move those Chromebooks. If they are, it'll be in the media center. If they're not able to, then it's going to be in Cafeteria North.
Okay.
And we'll have a sign posted if we have to change location.
But somewhere at the high school?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah.
So, I think it's important to include that in whatever update you put on the website, that, because people don't know what that means.
Absolutely.
What is, they think, retreat, and it's assumed that it's just for you, you guys. So, it's important to make sure that the public knows that they can come, and that's, again, part of transparency and communication.
Right, and so, I don't know, Mr. Giordano, if you want to talk a little bit about what a board retreat is, and that way, it'll illuminate for some people who don't know what the purpose of a board retreat is.
So, you had mentioned strategic planning, and we're talking about a board retreat. Now, strategic, when we have this strategic planning meetings, those are always open, the ones that we had three years ago, four years ago, those were open to the public, we had a lot of community involvement, so that'll be the same when we do the next one.
So, that's not what this is?
That's not what this is. So, a, a board retreat, and I'm going to read, because this is what school board says, right, but it makes sense in business and in the real world as well. "School Boards Association recommends holding a board retreat as a best practice for the board as a member and the teams, or the groups of people that make up the board. It provides an opportunity for board members to learn more about each other's passions, interests, and work styles. Provides an opportunity for board members to discuss the governance role of the board. Allows the board to discuss and establish broad priorities for the school district. Allows the board to identify strengths and challenges regarding its leadership role in the district. Helps board members develop better working relationships among themselves and between members and the superintendent. Allows the board to meet in an environment that is unrestricted from routines or traditional approaches." And it goes on and on, there's like four other things. You can get a copy of this, I'll, I'll send it to you. But the idea is for us to get together collectively as a group, not in this setting, right?
Without a business agenda.
Right, without a business agenda.
And not behind closed doors.
Right, not behind closed doors. Now, there's plenty of districts that have these, where they have them and they don't make them public. We're just, we're making it public, because we want to be transparent, right?
That's good.
So, you can see us, anybody that wants to come to this meeting can come and watch us interact and see the things that we talk, or hear the things that we talk about, see how we work together. So, we're being transparent.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, so that's great. I think that's what you just described is probably a very good thing to put on the website when you update it. Is that going to be televised?
It is not.
It's not, okay. I also just wanted to send kudos out to, I, I don't know who this woman is, Kathy Ryan Newman, and also Rihanna Mendez, they do a fantastic job with updating the community in an unbiased, non-dramatical way. Things are very cut and dry, and so I just want to send that out there and just say that I appreciate it, because there are things that I get off of their postings that I don't get from the district, so I just wanted to say that.
Ms. Marshall, can I, can I add to that, please?
Yeah.
You're talking posting, I'm assuming you're saying Facebook?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Do us a favor, every one of our email addresses is on the school website.
Okay.
If you want to find out a fact about the school or something we can help you out with, just reach out to us.
Okay.
Don't go by Facebook and social media. We're the real, the real deal up here, and if you want to reach out to us, we'll talk to you.
Okay.
All right?
I'll remember that, that hasn't worked for me in the past, but I will remember that, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I wanted to also talk about the high school bathrooms. Again, this is word of mouth, there's only one set of bathrooms open, blah, 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 blah. The high school that I went to, we, and I'm going back almost 25 years ago, we had teachers that sat at a desk in a hallway, they were not doing lesson plans, they were not grading papers, they sat there with a notebook and something to write with, and at every corner and every intersection of the hall, of the building, there was someone there and available. I know that that is close to impossible with their schedules and their, their pulled in a million different directions, but then I think about the paras that we just sent on their way. Just a suggestion, something to think about, I think that every high school student, middle school student, I don't think Mill Pond, but does every middle school and high school student get a picture ID?
Yes, but are you asking, do they wear them? They don't wear them?
Well, I know they don't wear them, that's where I'm going with this.
Right.
I think it should be included in the dress code, that every student is to wear a picture ID at all times, and if somebody's walking in the hallway and they don't have a pass, the accountability falls on an adult who is somewhere within that vicinity to capture what that student is doing out in the hallway. And then you know, who was the last one in that boys' bathroom, who was the last one in the girls' bathroom, and go from there. Right now, the kids have free rein, I know it, because I talk to my kids and I talk to their friends, and it's a free-for-all, because there's nobody there watching them. And I understand it costs money to put somebody in the hallway, but maybe we could bring those paras back for at least that, or at least in the busy times of the day, something along those lines.
So, can I, let me, can I just comment on something?
Yes.
I also heard that there were, there was a rumor that there was only one set of bathrooms open, and I'm going to tell you that that is absolutely positively not true. The second thing, you talked about staff members serving as monitors, that is going on at the high school, and to a certain extent at the middle school as well, and that is a practice that we will continue.
Okay.
As far as the photo IDs, I did write that down, it's something that we have been talking about, and I know for a fact that there are other school districts that require students to wear photo IDs.
Makes sense.
I think of, of one particular district where students are even using MS Swipes to gain entry into, say, the media center.
Right, but that's going to cost money for the technology and all that.
Sure, and it's something that we have to plan for.
But if you have a human there, it can do the same thing.
Right.
The same job. Piggybacking on to safety, back in January, I believe it was, we had the Alice presentation for the public, and I expressed my concern that there was not a procedure in place for accountability on every single student when there's an evacuation or a fire drill. And I just would like to know, now that school starts in 16 days, has there been any movement towards figuring out, how do we keep track of every kid in and out of the building?
So, have there been discussions? Absolutely, especially when, you know, we talk about the vestibules. I invited our families to a visitor management protocol meeting on, or an information session on August 28th. Getting to that point required lots of, of conversation, and our families are quickly going to realize that our visitor management protocols are going to look very, very different than they did on the last day of school in June. We have a brand-new training video for our students, grades five through eight, and different training protocols for our elementary students, and I know I'm kind of veering off on your question, I'm going to get to it. But in those process, processes, in that, in the development of all that, in the planning of all of that, we talk about our weaknesses, per se, but to say that we're going to talk about it in, in public is something that we're not going to do.
Right, no.
Because we don't want to, in a public, recorded session, reveal what all of our practices are, because we're just really...
No, that would be...
Giving away our, our secrets, for lack of a better word. But, in that... are going to look very, very different than they did on the last day of school in June. Um, we have a brand-new training video, um, for our students, grades five through eight, and different training, uh, protocols for, um, our elementary students, and I know I'm kind of veering off on your question, I'm going to get to it. Um, but in those process, processes, um, in that, in the development of all that, in the planning of all of that, we talk about, uh, our weaknesses, per se. Um, but to say that we're going to talk about it in, in public is something that we're not going to do.
Right, no.
Because we don't want to-
Right.
-in a public recorded session reveal-
Right.
-what all of our practices are, because we're just really-
No, that would be-
-giving away our, our secrets.
Right.
For lack of a better word. Um, but in that information session, we will try to provide as much information, obviously that's appropriate, um, but keeping things close to us as to not reveal in public what our protocols are for that, if, if that answered your question.
Well, I'm, I'm really just concerned with, you know, we set off the fire alarm because we're doing a drill, or even if it's real, whatever, whatever the case may be, but students are out of the building. And you may have your staff that's taking attendance, you know, A through Z on their list, but what do they do with the information when Johnny Smith is not in line? They have no way to communicate that right now to a central location or to a, um, you know, I explained how the, how the process was at my previous district. It was really very simple, you have five lines, you have a point person, does, does line one have everybody? Okay, fine, line two, nope, we're missing Suzie. Okay, we need to find Suzie. We don't go any further until somebody finds Suzie, and that's it. And because, not, not only for, you know, um, vandalism and stuff like that, but we're accountable for every single student during the school day.
Right, but-
They use walkie-talkies to call somewhere?
They don't.
No, I'm not, I'm calling back.
Yes, 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 yes. That, there's another technique where they use cards.
Uh-huh.
So a green and a red, so the teacher will have either green if they have everybody or a red if they don't. I mean, there's lots of different things-
Then a walkie-talkie to call, to find them.
Right, and then there's like a central person who maybe doesn't have a class at that time, and they're the ones with the walkie-talkie who's going to communicate with the administrator, and nobody speaks until they're spoken to, so that you don't have cross-communication. So there's lots of different ideas, I would just really like to see something in place before the first fire drill.
Right, but let me just say this, that level of detail is not ever, anything that we would ever discuss in a meeting like this.
No, I know that.
Okay.
I know that.
All right, just let me make sure we're on page.
I'm just saying, we spoke about this seven months ago, and I just wanted to see if there was any progress with that conversation, that's all. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Gavin Rozi, Forked River, New Jersey. Uh, what I wanted to speak about tonight is, uh, you know, as a Lacey resident and is a candidate for Board of Education, uh, I'm deeply concerned about the lack of leadership that has been shown, uh, with regard to the recent departure of a board member, and I'm referencing Mr. de Blass. Um, this is a situation where we had serial absenteeism from a board member, and listen, I re- I recognize the fact that this is a volunteer job, I recognize the fact that we all have other full-time commitments outside of that, and I certainly don't begrudge anybody on this board for making that commitment and dealing with the challenges of scheduling. But what we have seen from the meeting minutes and the committee meeting minutes that I've reviewed since 2018, and, um, just the, the general, uh, topic of this being brought up at previous board meetings, this, this was unacceptable to members of the public. You know, leadership starts from the top. Part of running a successful organization is creating a culture that is conducive to success, and part of that is honoring your commitments, honoring your responsibilities, and ensuring that the business of the board can be done in effect, in an effective manner. And with the challenges that our district and our community is facing, including these cuts to state funding, we cannot have a board that is not fully engaged and not running at 100% capacity. And this serial absenteeism that was created by this particular member was a big problem. Now, this unfortunate situation that we found ourselves in as a community, I, I feel like this was an acid test for the leadership of our Board of, Board of Education, and this was a chance for us to see, would the board hold true to our board policies and our board regulations and comply with state law? Unfortunately, in, in my view, I believe we fell short in the handling of this situation, uh, as corroborated by Mr. de Blass's statement to the Lacey Patch in an interview. In a publicly available article, um, there was a quote, he said, quote, "I was concerned with this when I first started this, but I was told, 'Don't worry, you can make every other one, you're okay.'" He's meaning a meeting. And then, uh, he also says, "Board members tried to say, 'Oh, it's no big deal,'" regarding his absenteeism from meetings. And, you know, I do give him credit for recognizing it was time to step aside. He did say, "But it is a big deal, nobody's asking me to do this, this is something that I think I need to do." So if, if any member of this board believes that it is acceptable to be missing meetings in a manner that contravenes both policy and state law, um, I, I find that deeply concerning, and, you know, complying with state law and board policies is not optional. This has to be the first priority ship, priority of our board's leadership, and if anyone else on this board believes that it is acceptable to be absent in such a manner, then I would also encourage you to consider stepping aside, because that is not the culture that is going to lead us into success as a district. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Good evening, Debe Hujan, Forked River. I have, uh, some questions still about the para situation. Uh, how many paras, part-time paras have you hired back?
On tonight's agenda, there are 57, part-time.
And 50 full-time?
And 50 full-time.
Okay, so how are less paras, working less hours, going to cover all of the children that need paras?
It's required a very concerted effort from Mr. Bond, our Director of Special Services, and his team.
My child missed two days of ESY this year because there was no backup para trained. Last year, my child's para missed several lunches. The year before that, his case manager took care of him during her lunch, the year before that, there was issues, and the year before that. So I don't understand how you think that less paras working less hours is actually going to help, because it's not, it's not working now, it wasn't working before, it didn't work over the summer, so what's your plan?
We have a plan. I just said Mr. Bond and his team are working overtime to, not literally, actually are, oh, I'm sorry. Is that better? Okay. Um, so, Mr. Bond and his team have been working, they're con- continue to work. Um, you know, we have a responsibility to ensure complacency. Um, we have said from the beginning that, um, our students' needs were always going to be our number-one priority, that hasn't changed. Um, he's continuing to work on that, and, like I said, we have a responsibility to ensure complacency, and we are absolutely going to do that and beyond. So perhaps it doesn't make sense right now, um, but at the end of the day, when, when school is about ready to begin and our para professionals are in place and trained, our students' needs are going to be met.
I hope so, but, uh, I don't have much faith after the past few years.
Well, I hope we can change your mind.
I hope so, too. Uh, is there going to be a case manager appointed to the middle school?
Um, for the vacancy of Mr. Mrs. Krukowski?
Yes.
We are in the process of hiring that person right now.
So will it be done before school starts?
We are hoping that that person will be in place.
How are the IEPs for the children that she's supposed to take care of be implemented if she's only got a week to get ready for it?
That's something that Mr. Bond and his team are also working on.
No answers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Um, good evening, uh, members of the Lacey School District and members of the public. My name is Richard Bidnick, I live here in Forked River. Before I start my public comments, I wanted to express that what I'm about to say is not personal in nature, but of a business significance, as I do not know any of these individuals personally, and this is business, and sometimes individuals can get carried away. With that said, I have to say, I'm thoroughly disgusted with the information I received through my forced Oprah request concerning documents dealing with the complete salary and benefit costs of every employee of this district, which, by the way, every taxpayer has a right to see and view, especially since we are paying the bills. I had requested this information back in March, it took me six months to get it, and it was incomplete and lacking all the info I had requested. Not only was the format extremely cumbersome to have to review, it was made as difficult as possible for me to ascertain the kind of information I was requesting. I realized when I received these documents just how badly managed this organization is, and the word transparency, a joke when it becomes to Lacey Township School District. I cannot believe in my life that not one member of this board has any interest in knowing the exact cost of each and every employee, as this information is where almost all of our expenses in this school district goes. It appears that this school district was run so much more efficiently just eight years ago, when this information was supplied with no fuss by Mr. Stardom. Stardom made the decision at a public meeting and made the information readily available within a month, and he put it on the school's website where it should be. Any well-run institution, especially one which has financial issues, would have a document like this, because when you have to lay off individuals or reduce costs, you can see the full amount that the elimination of that position will save. This is just plain logical business sense, but in the world of the Lacey School District, this seems not to exist. Missing were the social security taxes paid by the district for every employee, the dental insurance costs, and vision care if there is any, and pension contributions made by the district, and let's not forget, unemployment insurance cost, but there was no mention of the unused sick days, which we, the taxpayers, are on the hook for in the amount of over $17 million. You can see that for yourself, it's on the CAFR report. What I was given were percentages for myself to have to compute for social security, unemployment, and pension costs. They wanted to make this as difficult for me to figure out, and they did. Goes to show that the word transparency that Mr. Giordano likes to float around is just a pure fabrication. I did go through the list, though, and I did pick out a few employees at random, so members of this body have some idea of just how much those hidden costs truly are, and it ain't pretty, folks, and some of it just does not make any sense. But of course, logic does not seem to be this body's strong suit. But if you are just a puppet of the special interest, well, it would. I'm going to read now from, uh, the list that I compiled. Now, it's not totally complete, meaning that I'm missing, um, the dental insurance costs because I was never supplied that file, although it did say in the Oprah request that it was there, but it's not there. And the people's, employees that I'm mentioning, I don't know any of these people, I'm just, I pulled this out random, but I'm, I'm giving a breakdown. So the first person's last name was Anderson, they are a teacher. Their yearly salary is $93,720. They receive a $3,650 longevity increase. Their health insurance cost was $31,673 to the taxpayer. Their social security taxes that we paid were $7,448, and their pension contribution, Their drug plan cost us $9,383.16, a total of $159,613, which does not include the other things that I have missing, so it's well over $160,000. The next one, a last name of Andreski, teacher, $69,362 was the salary. Then there's an other salary that they are paid, it's at, for $6,032, plus a longevity increase of $6,282, insurance cost of $31,386, a social security tax of $5,983, a pension contribution of $11,036, a drug plan of $9,383.16, a total of $136,000 and change. Okay, so the lowest salary I could find information on was, uh, an employee by the last name, a teacher by the last name of Collins. Uh, $54,190 was the salary, they received $580 in a longevity increase, health insurance of $31,398, social security of $4,190, a pension contribution of $7,728, a drug plan of $9,383, and a total of $107,469. So you can get the picture, that the benefits are almost more or half of what the salary is for every employee in this school district. Now, I'm going to give you what Vanessa's salary is. Her salary was $188,581, she received a $2,500 longevity increase, $21,957 for health insurance, $8,239 for social security, $26,961 for pension contribution, $9,383.16 for her drug plan, a total of $257,621. Now, I'm going to tell you, Vanessa, I wouldn't take this job for a half a million dollars because it is a thankless job. She has one of the most thankless jobs around, this one and the nursing home director of where my parents are, are two jobs where you have, no matter what you do, you can't please anybody. You have to deal with endless parents' requests of everything that they want for every one of their children, you have people like myself who are angry taxpayers, who are not happy, you have, you know, all the special interest groups that are after you. So the salary, to me, that's why, to me, it seems so off, that the superintendent's salary, which is the most important person, well, not most important person, but the person who is in charge of everything, is really not really very much, as far as I'm concerned, compared to what we're seeing from other people who have so much less responsibility, as far as I'm concerned. But, um, these figures and numbers are, I wanted the public to just get, like, you know, just a little bit, it's, there's nothing less than over $100,000. And that's a lot of money for a town here. Most of these people do not have anything like this in benefits in this town. Yeah, they're paying for it. If you have an employer, the employer makes you pay for like 50% of your health insurance or more. Here, in these public positions, especially with these bureaucracies, they, um, they're, you know, they're known for not doing what the public sector does, and part of the thing that I know Senator Sweeney is trying to do is to push all of this in that direction, which really needs to go. But part of the issue that I have with all this is that you negotiated contracts. When people have longevity increases, why are you giving them another raise? So some people got $3,500 longevity plus another 4.8% increase on top of that. We're talking about an eight or nine percent increase a year when inflation is 1.8%. How do you justify that to the rest of the taxpayers in this town? You can't. It's outrageous, as far as I'm concerned. And you know, I've, I've said this all along, and I brought this up before at other meetings, I don't understand how you can negotiate contracts that you have done without not attaching, uh, performance evaluations to student achievement. And if you don't receive the highest rating, you don't get a raise. Plain and simple. We don't want anybody who's mediocre. We want only the best, and if you're not the best, find another profession. That's what I say. It's kind of like, you know, you're dealing with the future of our country, the children, for God's sakes, and there's no room for the deadwood or people who aren't performing, and that really is up to the administration that works under Vanessa to basically really pull the screws as far as, you know, you're not going to get away with this anymore, and we're going to be on top of you, and there are ways to remove these people. You just have to be on top of them. I know, I ran a union organization, I know how to deal with a union, and you have to have, you have to have, be strong, and you have to be tough, and sometimes you have to make a lot of decisions that aren't popular, but you have to do it, and you're a public body, and you know what? You are, you are held accountable, not just to private board like I worked for, you are accountable to the entire population of this town. So with that, I'm requesting, again, that this information be made readily available in a format easily available for the public so they can see for themselves how they are being taken for a ride financially. It's our money, we have a right to know how it's being spent. I always hear that it's supposed to all be about the students, but that is another lie, because the- but that is another lie because the facts speak otherwise. And how sad is that? My interest in this school district has always been about financial accountability and prudent spending of public dollars. I leave it up to the administration to figure out how to do what they have to do on the amount of dollars allocated. It is amazing though, what can be done when one has to. But obviously, there's no will to do the right thing. When you can just keep raising people's taxes to no end, this body could care less about the elderly or the individual struggling to put food on the table. And their attitude at times is one that you should just starve yourself to death if you have to, just as long as you pay your taxes. On another note, I was appalled at what I saw at the last meeting with the response to the concerns of public citizens about the one individual board member who had a tremendous amount of absences. It's obvious this body was going to do nothing until there was some sort of public outcry. "Mr. Giordano, as board president, you are a disgrace." You actually tried to protect and cover up-
All right, listen, you know what? I'm not going to let you stand up there and publicly attack me. Anybody that wants to go back and play that tape back. Did you watch? Were you at that meeting?
I did, I watched the tape.
Okay, what were my words that I said?
You basically said-
Let me finish. I'm not going to defend Mr. de Blas.
Well, I would like, this is my time, excuse me. This is my time, I want to finish my report, then you can respond.
All right, well, I'm not going to let you sit up there and call me a disgrace because you don't know me, you don't know how I operate-
I said this is not personal.
And I'm not going to take your personal attacks.
But this isn't personal, this is business.
Well, I'll let you finish.
Well, exactly. Okay, so you actually tried to protect, as far as I'm concerned, and cover up the obvious problem that existed. And again, your lack of candor and transparency, my view, shows once again that you are unfit to serve. You have made the word transparency a folly, and you're nothing more than a puppet for the union. And when you're-
Really?
Yes, and when you're-
I'm a puppet for the union.
And when you're serving the taxpayers who pay the bills for this school, what galls me the most is that you don't even own property in this town. So why should you care if the taxes go sky high?
What was your tax increase this year?
Let me finish.
What was it?
I'm not, I am talking, this is my time. This is a reality check, not silly-
Was it, was it less than a penny?
I don't know, all I know is my taxes-
Go look at what the tax rate went up this year.
My taxes went up, okay?
Less than a penny?
This is a reality check, not silly season. You can call it that, but it's not silly at all when the taxpayers are being taken for a ride. Accountability is really what it is all about to me, and quite frankly, I am sick to death of excuses. With one thousand one hundred student, one thousand one hundred student drop in enrollment over the last several years, and one hundred and thirty-one classes with less than fifteen students in them alone in the high school, you've got to wonder what is really going on at the Lacy Township School District? And is this just another job factory? We need to have a school board which is accountable to the taxpayers and not the special interests who have not made this school system better, in my personal view. Why is it that years ago, this school district was ranked much higher than it is today, but yet it costs so much less? I think the answer to that question is pretty simple. When there is no accountability, this is exactly what you get. Did you ever think for one moment that the reason why people may not come to these meetings and speak out like I do is because they feel that you could care less about their concerns, especially when it comes to public dollars? It really is time for a reality check. Any candidates who are running for office this year, I would like you all to make a promise to the taxpayers that you will truly be transparent and support all those who feel they are not being represented, which to me is like ninety percent of the population of this town. And please, if you are out there in TV land, get out and vote. You have stopped me, talked to me, encouraged me to speak about, but you need to do your part. Vote. This is your money, your town, and your school. Thank you very much.
Wait, before Sean jumps in, if he does, Mr. Bidnick, the question for you I have is, you talked about a bunch of salary guides before and how we are, you know, where the administration is bilking the township. Where do we rack in with towns around us? Where are teachers being paid in central and-
Well, actually, that's, no, actually, I went through and looked at the art, there was an article. We are right in the middle of the whole state. We're three fifty-one.
So it's statewide, it's not, we're not an isolated incident? It's everyone, teachers are being paid basically the same thing across the state?
But you know, what I have to say to you though is that I guess I wouldn't have the problem if this school was truly outstanding and we were producing Einsteins left and right, and they were all going to Harvard and Yale-
Excuse me, my daughter's at UPenn, and I'm tired of you coming up here using this platform to bash us and for political campaigns up here. My daughter is at UPenn, is that an Ivy League school? She graduated Lacy Township High School. She went through the Lacy Township School District.
Okay.
On the dean's list at UPenn, look it up.
Okay, and how many, excuse me, I've asked this question before, but I never got an answer. How many actually are applying and getting in? I mean, we would know that, we're, I'm going to tell you, where I went to school, over fifty percent of the students, and it was a public high school, got into the Ivy League schools.
And where was that school located?
In Pennsylvania.
What, what town?
Abington Heights in Clark Summit.
And what was the payroll salary there, how much taxes there?
Not high, not high. I can tell you that. And we had one of the best swim teams, best athletics. You know, it's all about accountability, and quite frankly, you know what? If you don't want to take the heat, especially from the people who are paying the bills, quite frankly, the taxpayers, I mean, we have a right to question, and there's a lot to question. There have been a lot of decisions that have been made by this board over the years. The solar panel fiasco, perfect example. I'm sorry.
How long ago was that?
It doesn't matter, it should never, it should never have happened.
Most of this board was not even on the board.
But the point of the matter is, is it should never have happened, okay? But it continues to happen. I mean, you continue to make decisions, as far as I'm concerned, that have no thought or concern about the taxpayers, none.
I think you made your point. Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
I have one question for you.
Yes, thank you.
Since you're so passionate, and you come up here and you spew for twenty minutes, why didn't you get fifteen signatures and come run for a board head position?
I'll tell you why. Because I have much more power here than back there. And you know what? You, you basically, you basically have to sit there and you have to, you know, you can't say whatever you want to.
Oh, yes, we can.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you can, you can, but quite frankly, it might not be so politically correct.
How about when you take your walk around the lake, you stop me one day, and I'll have a conversation with you one-on-one, and then you can say whatever you want to me, and I can say whatever I want to you.
I don't have, you know, I don't have anything, I don't know you from tomorrow.
You don't know me from anybody. You could say I'm a disgrace, you could say I lack transparency.
Well, I'm talking about your position here on the school board. I don't know what kind of a person you are, I don't know anything about you, and I said that.
Well, thank you then for your honest opinion.
Didn't I basically say that right at the beginning of my, you're a perfect example of why I had to make the comment that I did. I said, "This is not personal." And it isn't, because I don't know you from tomorrow, but I am very unhappy with your performance as school president, and I have a right to say that.
That's your opinion, you're entitled to that, you do have a right to say that.
Exactly, and I think I addressed that. Thank you very much for the time.
Anyone else? You sure? All right. Seeing no more, no more public comment, I'll make a motion to close the floor for public comment. Do you have a movement?
Motion.
Give me a second there. All right. At this point in time, we will have committee reports, and we will start with Mr. Riggs for policy.
Okay, guys, so as promised, we didn't have a policy meeting, the meeting before, but we had two in the meantime. So both meetings, I had the same, the same group. It was myself, Skip, and Regina filled in both times. The first policy meeting had to do with, Regina had actually recommended, proposed a couple changes to policies. And actually, Mr. Bidnick, this can go back to you because we spent time in multiple policies trying to deal with the situation of absentee board members. So it wasn't that this conversation wasn't happening behind the scenes, or nobody was covering up for anybody. It was just, we weren't exactly sure the way that it had to work out. But that was a whole different story altogether. But I think you're wrong in that regard, in that thinking that we were covering for anyone because we talked about it a lot behind the scenes. But anyway, so the upcoming changes to policy oh-one-five-five, Regina had wanted to put a negotiations committee in because there's never been one there before. So that's actually going to be a supplemental policy to oh-one-five-five. We're going to do oh-one-five-five point one. That's in the works right now. We reviewed oh-one-four-three, which had to do with board member election and appointment, which is exactly what we were talking about. We didn't do any changes there because there was actually a policy oh-one-four-five which covered everything that we wanted it to cover. So we didn't have to change anything there. And we reviewed nine-three-one-zero, which was cooperation with municipal agencies, and again, no changes were there made. In finance and committee, we took away security because that was already down in policy under safety and security. We took away technology because that was already down in curriculum. And we added in township liaison, which was listed elsewhere, but it was not listed in the committee responsibilities. So now finance has a township liaison component to it too, which was never there before. The second meeting we did was on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. We met at nine-thirty in the morning, like I said, it was myself, Skip, and Regina. That one, we talked about policy oh-one-five-five again, which happens to come up all the time. This is one of those self-regulating policies. It doesn't have anything to do with student achievement. It's the way we operate as a board, or the way that we operate. In this particular instance, committee meetings and if board members can be on their phone, not on their phone here, but if they're not present during the meeting and they can have their phone here and still listen in. We thought it was a bad policy, it had no place, they can't vote anyway. So it was, it went nowhere. There's really no reason for it. You could watch it on video. So I don't really see what the point of having a phone sitting on the side would be if someone couldn't be here, if they were on vacation or were sick for some reason. So we opted out of that. We talked about ice hockey, co-op, and putting that into the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, working with Winding River. It was initially, it was always Saturday and Sunday games, which had a lot of overtime charges for transportation, things like that. So we're trying to work weekday games in instead. Naming of the football field, we talked about it, and we didn't really go anywhere with it. So we're going to go back to that again. New visitor management protocols, which you guys probably heard a couple times. Dr. Clark brought it up originally, and then, which has to do with policy regulation nine-one-five-zero. That is put into place to coincide with our new security vestibules. So we're trying to do it all as one. And we'd really like everyone, if you could, to come out on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth at six o'clock, come to the parent info session and find out all the changes that are going to be from last year to this year. There's going to be some changes in there, you know, all security-based changes. So it's not going to be just, you know, people walking all over the place in the morning, dropping off their kids, this kind of stuff. I got the twenty-eighth, Wednesday, August twenty-eighth at six o'clock.
All right, if we have to make an adjustment, we will.
All right. Time, you want to talk about that one? All right, that was pretty much it. So anybody that can, just go to that, go, well, if it has to change, are you going to change that date or not?
Yeah, I'll-
Okay, all right. So yeah, like you said, check back in with Vanessa if we have some kind of overlap there.
I haven't sent out any automated calls about that yet, so we'll, we'll take a look at that.
That was pretty much it, guys. As we said before, have a safe and happy end of the summer, last two weeks. Enjoy it while you can. Thanks to Mark Maggiar, if anybody wasn't here at the six o'clock hour. We had Mark Maggiar here from Sweeney's, Senator Sweeney's office. He talked to us for quite a bit about S-two and all the changes, and hopefully some changes that are going to be coming down the line and stuff like that. Very informative, neat session. If you missed it, you could watch it earlier on the, on the video. And then to all of our candidates tonight. I didn't know it was candidate night already, but thank you for everyone coming out and pitching. And I guess we're already getting kind of silly. We're not even anywhere near November yet, but let's, let's start ramping it up already. And that's it, guys. I'll see you back in September. Ciao.
All right, Mrs. Downing with the curriculum committee? Can you jump right in?
Okay, on August fifteenth, we had a curriculum meeting. In attendance was myself, Regina, and Mr. Riggs sat in for us. Thank you very much. Dr. Clark and Mr. Decker were here as, as well. We talked about school objectives. Mr. Decker provided the committee with an overview of all the school objectives proposed for implementation for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Focus was on at-risk students, trying to systematically approach to raise the bar. Professional development, we spoke about for the teachers for the first three half-days of school. Students have half-days, the teachers will be here doing professional development. We talked about job descriptions that are on the board agenda for tonight. Health Office Clerical Assistant, Part-Time Paraprofessional Job, and Web-Based Communication Liaison, all new job descriptions, tweaked and refined. Also, we discussed the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty field trips. We saw a list of field trips proposed for the nineteen-twenty school year, and we will be approving them, I believe, tonight. We also reviewed the parent-student handbooks for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. We reviewed the elementary schools, which will be on the agenda tonight, but the middle school and high school are still being worked on and tweaked as we speak. We talked about evaluations for the teachers. The real-time evaluation scheduling, Mr. Decker again led the discussion about our new processing, process for scheduling teacher and administrative evaluations for two thousand nineteen-twenty. We used Danielson here in Lacy, and we just discussed a little bit about the evaluation procedure, the scripting, the evidence, to really help the teachers improve their teaching, not just to observe them and write up what you saw. Adding comments to improve techniques, give suggestions. We also discussed the tech program handbook, student and parent agreement. And the really exciting part was, we had a quick discussion. Mr. Decker had just met with the Big Brothers and Big Sisters organization, and we had a little discussion about how this program could potentially help Lacy Township School District, so there'll be more to come about that. There was nothing on health and wellness, and that was it. So it was a nice meeting, a lot discussed, and ready for the next, this school year. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Downing. Mr. Millandy, do you want to do the finance committee?
I think Dr. Clark did for me. August twelfth was our committee meeting, eight o'clock in the morning. And Dr. Clark in her speech basically went over what we discussed, a couple of safety vestibules, progress on that. Right after our meeting, Mr. Giordano and myself walked over to Milpon. I'm surprised that it-
Push your button.
I'm sorry. The project's going along very well.
And we saw the work that was done already. So I think we're going to be going to all the schools and checking on the progress of that. We spoke about the Milpon gym floor, progress on that. Unfortunately, like I said, it's contractors' work. They're trying to get done as soon as possible. Unfortunately, there's some holdups with the things that we ordered that needs to be delivered before we could continue to work on that. But they're, they're still working. And like Mr. DeGeorge said, it should be done by the beginning of November. We also discussed the Milpon boiler replacement project and the high school track replacement project. So with that, I believe our next meeting is second week of September, the week prior to the board meeting. And I'll discuss what we went over that meeting in September. Thank you.
Any other comment? You good?
Um.
You good? All right. Ms. DeSenza?
Yes, thank you. It was another very busy month, even though it's still summer vacation for our students and staff. The Board of Education and Administration is working very hard to ensure a smooth start to the school year ahead. Although this- Although this year is going to be one of the most challenging in history, as we know, more budget cuts are coming due to the severe decrease in state aid on the horizon, we were given a number in Finance Committee that the cuts could be nearly $1 million for the 2020-2021 budget. And thank you also to Mr. Mark Maggiar, the Associate Executive Director to Senator Sweeney, for speaking with us tonight about the S2 school funding reform bill. And we do apologize that the Mill Pond school floor gym, the school gym floor is not ready for September opening, but the process that the district had to go through to get this floor diagnosed, then slated for removal, was long and arduous, it was almost like two or three separate projects. Diagnosing the mercury, finding a contractor for the removal and cleanup, and then a separate contractor for the replacement floor, and I don't know how many people are aware, but the project also involved replacing the bleachers. This was a major capital improvement project, and it had to be done in a fully compliant manner with state laws and state bidding rules and regulations. I'd like to thank the 10 Lacey residents that have come forward as candidates for the four open board seats on November 5th due to the untimely departure of Mr. Horvath when he moved out of the district. As many may also know, the board now has another vacancy. Mr. deBlass had decided to step down on July 25th, and we thank him for his service. Lacey residents that are registered to vote may submit a letter of interest and resume to the School Business Administrator Board Secretary by September 6th for the vacancy. Please send an email to Mr. DeGeorge. As mentioned, on the morning of July 22nd, we held our committee meetings, and it's the first time in a long time I was able to attend all three, finance, curriculum, and policy. We covered a lot, and I thank Dr. Clark for her kind attention to the policy bylaw updates, but more fine-tuning is still needed with some others. The most important part of our committee meetings on the 22nd was the visit from Kathy Weincoff, our NJ SBA field service rep, who came to speak to us about our new strategic plan, and we worked out a timeline. I hope that the calendar will be published on the website soon, this is all in the works. In the evening of July 22nd, I attended the Municipal Alliance meeting. The annual 5K race is this coming Saturday, August 24th. This is the main fundraiser of the year for the Municipal Alliance. Unfortunately, I was away for the special meeting held on July 29th that was arranged last minute on July 22nd, but that special meeting had one agenda item to authorize the application for emergency state aid in the amount of $623,156. I really hope that our state aid application gets approved. I also missed the Township Committee Liaison meeting that was held on the afternoon of July 29th while I was away. There are now minutes that record me as absent. This is the first time we have recorded minutes for a subcommittee meeting of the Finance Committee. My question is, why weren't previous minutes taken at the May meeting? And for that, I would have been recorded as not invited. This is why the board needs to continue to fine-tune policy and bylaws. Monday, August 12th and Thursday, August 15th, we had committee meetings again, and I attended all three. This morning, at 10:00 a.m., I spent some time reviewing all the bills and vouchers as I do every month, and for the public knowledge, I'm going to mention some costs, and there is a reason for that. Benicard, our new prescription provider, for one month, the total cost was $341,792. I'm sorry, I do not have the quantity of employees that are on the plan, but these are big numbers. And the cost on tonight's agenda for Delta Dental is $44,436, that's for one month of the dental plan. The health benefits cost to the district just for this month, $993,969. The employee contribution to the health benefits this month was $36,774. Now that is an unusual amount, it is very low this month, because there are not many employees on the 12-month pay cycle, it will be very different in September, and I will hopefully get those numbers. The debt service payments for the year 2019, 3,000, oh, sorry, $3,774,427. Social Security and pension payment, this was an annual payment, $63,709. And the only reason I'm mentioning these numbers is to let the public know, this is money that is always spoken for, before we get to supplies, books, maintenance, and that is why I thank those who are stepping up to the plate as candidates. More citizens should know and learn how our public school system works. I do agree a little bit with Mr. Bidnick that the public needs to know where their tax dollars are going, and no one should need to do an Oprah request to see this information. The budget itself is not descriptive enough, and we should be more transparent. As previously mentioned also, the board retreat is due to take place on Wednesday, August 21st, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at the high school. This meeting is critical to begin the planning for the district goals utilizing a new strategic plan. It will be the Lacey School District's second strategic plan, and the public is invited to attend. And I just want to take a minute to remind all the board members, we have the NJ SBA workshop coming up, it's October 24th, 21st to the 24th, so mark your calendars, and I believe everybody should have got a postcard in the mail. Our next business meeting will be Monday, September 16th, at 6:00 p.m., the public portion begins at 7:00 p.m., it is the third Monday of the month, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSenza. Mr. Peters?
I would just like to add to Mr. Riggs' comment, one of the policy meetings that we had, we have some good news for some sports, for wrestling, we are now looking into letting sixth graders participate in the sport of wrestling with the middle school. We've always been competing against other schools that were sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and every time we went to a wrestling match, we were having defeats in the lower weight classes, because our middle school is only seventh and eighth grade. Mr. Elvento has worked extremely hard on that, and we're trying to implement that. Thank you.
Do you have other comments? All right. First of all, I want to thank our custodians, our grounds and maintenance staff, and the secretarial staff, along with the administration, for, you know, it's a 12-year, or 12-month job.
12-month process.
So they're, they're working really hard to get the schools ready and ready for students, so congratulations to them. As you know, this, this school board takes security very seriously. As Mr. Morandi mentioned, he and I went and looked at the security vestibules in both Mill Pond, actually went to the high school to see that construction as well, and happy to say that that's moving along and will be ready for the beginning of the school year. We met some new staff tonight, so welcome to those that are new to the district, and welcome to new schools, some members that were in other schools have switched to different schools, so we wish them well in those moves. We thanked Mark Maggiar for coming out, that was a very interesting meeting, a few of us actually got the opportunity to sit in the room with him and talk to him about S2, and one of the things that I think we all learned tonight was the fact that the school, SFRA, the School Funding Formula Reform Act, that that formula self-adjusts, so as our enrollment increases, enrollment increases, as income figures in the town fluctuate, go up, go down, it all contributes to what we will receive in funding. So the $4.1 million that we are out right now, or 4.47 that we're out now, may actually normalize depending on some of these numbers, right? So as we have students coming into town, enrollment goes up, different factors like that can potentially change that number as time goes on. We have the football field coming up with the lights, that's going to be really exciting when we turn those on for the first time. We talked about the, the gym floor, and obviously, we're in the process of working on the track and replacing the track. You know, it's, it's really easy to take shots at people that sit up here, and yes, we are all volunteers, and, you know, I went through K through 12 here, graduated here, went to Seton Hall, graduated Seton Hall, went to Pigwigan Nursery School here, I do this because I had such a great experience as a student, and I've been in this town for 47 years. Mr. Bidnick, I don't know how long you've been in this town for, but I can tell you, when you sit up there and you say that you're not going to attack people, and you use words like coward, and puppet, and disgrace, that to me seems like an attack, and I get it, it's the political season, you're posturing, but I meant what I said. You know, you have Mrs. Marchatello up here, Mr. Scanlon up here, Mr. Rozzi who left, and Mr. Armato sitting over there, they put petitions in, they're going to run for election, and we have a democracy, and guess what? The people in the town will vote for the people that they want to put in these seats.
Exactly.
Right? And that's the beautiful thing about this. But, you know, when you get up there, sometimes when you're rattling off numbers and figures, I don't understand what, what you're trying to get at. I, I get that you're representing taxpayers and people on fixed incomes and seniors, my parents are senior citizens, they still live in the same house that I was raised in, fixed income, right? You know, everybody up here cares about two things, kids and the taxpayer. And when you sit up there and you talk about taxes, okay, and the taxes that went up less than a penny, under a penny, based on all the aid that we lost, you know, you talk about teacher salaries, this board hasn't, has shown that we're willing to reduce staff, that we're willing to reduce programs, that we have to cut back in order to float a budget, okay? So you have the right to get up there, and I mean, you know, I, this is the season, right? You want to try to ruffle feathers and, you know, cause some controversy. But Mr. Rozzi got up there, he kind of said the same thing, but he didn't really attack. I didn't defend Mr. deBlass, I didn't break any laws by, with that. You know what? When you're sitting up there and you're going to, you know, call me out, make sure you have your facts straight. The guy owns a business in town, the guy ran for election, the guy was voted in by the people. The gentleman deserved to have the right to step down, step down on his own accord. He didn't need to be publicly crucified up here, right? So when it was time for him to walk away, he walked away. And I don't know what board member you were insinuating that said, "You can go to this meeting and miss that one." Wasn't me, I don't think it was anybody that's sitting up here right now. All right, we all take these jobs, or this volunteer work, very serious. I give my time to do this for these kids and the taxpayers of this town. And when November comes, if decisions are made, and I'm sitting here again next year, great, because I'm still going to continue to do the job with the kids and the taxpayers in mind. All right? With that, I will end my comments, I promised I wouldn't go there tonight, but felt like I should. Thank you. With that.
Wait, Sean, can I crowbar in one thing here real fast?
Sure can.
So, everybody, if you could, it was mentioned a couple times tonight, come out to our board retreat. I got to tell you, I was the most resistant to this thing probably across the board, I made fun of it the whole time, maybe Nick might have gave me a run for my money. But it's really a good thing for all of us to do, and for everybody to show up, you know, participate in, and I just wanted to thank Vanessa, or congratulate Vanessa, or Dr. Clark, because she's been working really hard to put this thing together. Lacey Township's never had one before, we've never done a board retreat in the history of the Board of Education.
This is a first.
This is our first time, so we're in uncharted, uncharted waters here, so anybody that wants to get on board this ship with us, come on over. Wednesday night, we'll be here on our camping trip, or whatever we're doing.
Stop calling it a camping trip.
See you then.
Vanessa, you mentioned something about a man's call, automated call, does that just go to school district families, or does that go to the whole township?
It does not go to the whole township.
It should.
It can't.
We don't have the numbers.
We don't have that information.
You can't do it through, through township?
Only if it's an emergency.
But wouldn't it make sense?
It's not an emergency.
It can't do it. Just to our families.
All right. Any other comments? Close the floor to comments, we're good? We're good? All right, on the new business resolutions.
Moving along.
A, resolutions, 1 through 32.
New business 1 through 32, I'll make the motion.
Second. Roll call.
You seconded, sir.
I did.
Okay, great.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and I have to abstain on A20.
A20, the whole thing, or just one? The whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, standing on two bills, number 950450, and item 953821.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
I didn't get to vote.
You really want to vote?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza, did I miss you? I apologize.
Yes on all.
It really wasn't intentional.
Yes on all, except item 1, special meeting minutes, I have to abstain for absence. Nay on item 2, 953570, 950100, 522325. Abstain on voucher 953828 on attachment 2. And I have a comment, I think we need to show what the fund 90 agency monies are for, salaries and benefits used to be specified. If we could break that down next month, I'd really appreciate that.
Sure, you're going to send me your list, as always?
I will send you the list.
All right, moving on. B, programs and curriculum?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm going to abstain on Stockton University, and yes on the other one, number one, sorry.
Great, thank you. Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
C, professional days and workshops?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
D, certificated personnel, 1 through 14?
Motion.
Second.
Wake up.
Roll call. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes, and goodbye to Nicole, and good luck, and welcome back, Mr. Brossem, and congratulations to, to new Dr. Patterson.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
E, non-certificated personnel, 1 through 9?
Move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.